Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Okamas Board of Education. Secretary Doxy, could you call the order please? Here.
Um, I was just saying yes, President Buffett, but Tom Buffett.
Still here.
Jason Burns. Katie Kavanaugh. Andrew Phelps.
Karen.
Leeny Schruth.
Here.
Gillian Nguyen.
Here.
And I am here.
Fantastic. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Okamas Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school board. Is there anyone online for public comment? It's not even on you. Okay, great. So I'm not going to read that. And first thing we can do is adjourn to executive session. Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I moved at the board pursuant to section eight, parent C and eight, parent one, parent age of the open meeting act, the board of education adjourned to executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations and to review attorney client privileged information.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. This does recall a roll call vote. Secretary Doxy?
Tom Buffett.
Support.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Amy Schruth. Gillian Nguyen.
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Okay, that is seven oh. We will adjourn to executive session.
You
But I want to meet with you. You need to teach me how to write.
Okay, we are reconvening after being an executive session and we actually have to call the role Secretary Doxy.
Tom Buffett.
Here.
Jason Burns.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Here.
Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Lainey Shroppen.
Here.
Julianne Nguyen.
Here.
And I am here.
Okay, we have a discussion move forward about the 2022 bond projects Superintendent Hood.
Yeah, good evening to our trustees and members of the Oakham community. Thanks for joining us on this spring evening. Our reps from Veritas Tower and Chrisman are here to provide the latest update on the 2022 bond. The package three and four and above ground fuel storage tank, I think. So I will present the ideas. It's no wizardry.
Great. I think we can jump in. The agenda reflects what Superintendent Hood just mentioned. We're gonna bring bid package three, the Chippewa Middle School project's schedule and construction updates for the community as well as the high school pool pack work that is currently underway. A little bit of information there and update. And the and the fuel tank that's getting installed at the transportation building. Same faces you've seen before, but for the community, we've got Ed Talaga from Tower Pinkster. Shane Lonsberry from the Chrisman Company and Nate Hubert, whose name is not on here, but is also in attendance from the Chrisman Company. Just like you've seen in previous bond updates, we're here today for a construction update and then always communication plans provided at the end. And then the same timeline that you have seen for bid package three along the way and not here on any particular dot, but just here to bring a construction update as it aligned with the trustees walk through this afternoon at the new Chippewa Middle School site. And then from here, I can probably hand it over to Chrisman. This is the same site plan that we have shared previously, the dark outline. I really should let Ed talk to us. The original, the existing building. And then the red and the blue are the two phases of Chippewa and then Kinnawha that are coming. So just to orient you on the site. Ed, do you have anything else on that topic?
No, I think that's really, really it. It's just a diagram to help you understand the phases coming up and how we're working through that.
So that bright blue is one of our current buildings, right?
Correct.
Most of the work's being done in the back, so you don't see it from the road. You may not notice it as a resident who's not on that on that site. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of, a lot of updates, updates to share.
Currently at Chippewa, we have the new competition gym here on the left. The walls are up, the trusses are installed and the roof is on, so we're all dried in. We're going to be looking to pour this concrete slab yet this week. Over here on the right, you can see this is the the new community room, the kitchen, the survey for Chippewa and Kinnawha in the future. But right now we're doing overhead mechanical, electrical plumbing and underground in those areas. Here on the left, this is the old courtyard. That was north of the old cafeteria or the current cafeteria. And this is the the foundation and the footings that's being constructed for the new cafeteria. Just south of the old garage that'll have kitchen and survey in it. And you can see on the right side, here's another picture inside that that garage, the old garage space that'll get turned into the the survey and the kitchen area. Here we are on the northwest side of the building. This is the new competition gym that we were just inside that we showed you. And this corner is the new weight room. The the block is up, waiting for some storefront. You can see the steel columns and the beam right there. Waiting for some glass and frames. And then we'll we'll be starting to put brick on on the face of that here within next couple of weeks. This is coming around more to the north side. This is about due north. Where the loading dock area, we're looking back at the gym on the right there. This is a maintenance garage, some electrical, mechanical space. And then the loading dock for receiving to to the to the kitchen area. All this rebar that's standing up right here is the foundation, foundation for the auditorium that we're about ready to to construct. And this is looking at the, so on the left side here, we're in the southwest corner of the existing rubber gym or the west side gym. Looking at the the foundations and up there in the on the left side, that's the weight room coming down towards the wood shop, the stem room. And there's some concessions in that area. And then on the east side, this is a deep foundation that we just installed on the west side of the existing gym. This is switching bid packages. Now this is switching back to the pool work that we delayed for bid pack four, so we could accommodate the 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 pool scheduled for the summer or for this last winter. Now we're getting after painting the and doing the the structural repairs for the trusses. We had a very minimal some rust that we had to remove. There's some steel lentils or some windows and we're painting all of those trusses up there in the in the skylight, the framing. All of that'll that'll be nicely and fresh here in June, late June. And then this is the mechanical, so the the pool gets a new dehumidification system in it. We call it a pool pack. So these are air handler units that have been brought up and we're starting to to install the ductwork currently and replumb all that stuff. So that's where we're at with the the pool pack.
Okay.
Just an image of the recent pad, the pad that was recently poured at the transportation building for the above ground storage tank that was approved last fall. It's gone through the permitting process, which was somewhat lengthy. And by the end of this month, the two the tanks are scheduled for installation. With that, the communication information for anybody who's looking for more information about the bond program on your guys' bond website as well as there should be a time lapse of some of the action and progress at Chippewa Middle School. So definitely something to look into there as well. And then I think the last slide is our projected schedule for the next times we will be back to the board with bond updates. Planning to be back in June for a bond overview, just to just to check on where we are with all projects, scope and budget. And August will come back with a lot of construction updates as well as the next phase of the Cornell design, which is exciting. And then in October, we'll be back with that's the date for our next board walkthrough at Chippewa as well as an update on the high school music edition at that time, which bid package eight is not just high school music. That's part of it. And there's like four different end dates for the different scopes for that. So when we come back, we'll bring information on this varying schedules of that work. Are there any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I will say just a couple of quick comments. It was great to see the progress you made today. Something that I saw that I didn't really appreciate when whenever that was we visited, I guess it was last fall, is the this, the use of the existing Chippewa in the construction. And just like the attention paid to kind of a smart use of that, both in preserving things that have been still work and, you know, recent investments. But also like some of the lower ceilings that are there that just seem really intelligent. And by contrast, the pictures don't do the height of the 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 some of those, especially like the gym and the some of those hallways justice. And I guess the cafeteria will also be kind of a two story. So just just again, it's going to be an amazing unveiling when that happens. And it's great to go peek to them. But really great, great work. Trusty Kevin.
Well, John, this is more of a question for you, and maybe it's not even the right time, but thinking about having to bus all the kids to temporary Cornell. And the idea is the kids who are already being bussed to Cornell would just continue on their regular bus. Maybe we haven't thought this all to that detail yet. But then I'm just kind of wondering about does it save us anything if we are able to have Cornell still as like the walkers all walk there and then a bus takes them from there rather than going through the neighborhoods? And if car line can still be dropped off there? I don't know if it saves us anything, but you know, as we're trying to figure out how we're going to add more bus routes and more.
Let's talk a little bit offline about that one on one, so I can get some clarity about what you're what you're thinking and we can get some answers for you on that.
We're gonna be out. Like there'll be utility cut-ins.
That's what I was wondering.
For in the road.
Where you couldn't even get to it.
It would be a very difficult situation. I'd probably need to do something remote in the area.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Trusty Phelps.
Really fast. Just I I echo all of President Buffett's comments. I thought it was fantastic. I think the building looks amazing. It's a shame that the community can't see all that's happened from the roads. It's so far away. It just looks like there's construction over there, but you have no idea, but really exciting. Just my one question I ask this whenever you guys here, are we still on schedule and to be done? And have students there fall of twenty six?
Yes, we are. We are doing well on schedule. Yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you.
You bet.
And we always like to ask, are we on budget?
Yes, we are on budget. We're tracking good.
And again, I do want to praise the bond team and our owners reps from Veritas along with Executive Director Lentz for having that pulse on the budget. As you know, it's a very volatile time with budgets and this team has done a great job projecting forward to make sure we can keep as many of the promises we made to the community in the 2022 bond. And I have to say to date, we're on track to to keep those promises. So again, our approach is to get those big rocks done first, which is Chippewa, Kinnawha and Cornell. But we are doing some planning for additional smaller projects already because our budgets are coming in so well at this point. So we'll be happy to provide you with that update. Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a discussion move forward regarding technology purchases Superintendent Hood. Yeah, so Tom Isom, our Director of Media and Technology is here. He's going to provide information to you on another bond purchase. Firewall data center upgrades and phone systems this evening. So Tom's going to take about the next five minutes to walk the board and community through that process and what they can expect to be updated through the 2022 bond. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for having me on and reviewing this request. So as part, like John said, 2022 bond initiative, the technology piece, we're looking to improve the district's infrastructure, just like we've been doing. So have data center upgrades, the data center upgrades we're doing this year are going to be our servers and our storage for those servers. So we have a couple of servers. We update them. They're our virtual world. And then we have a lot of storage for files and so forth. So that needs to be updated. The firewall needs to be upgraded and so does the phone system. So we'll start with the data center. Those servers that are in there and those storage arrays. They're about six years old. It was with the last bond that 2019 bond, they purchased that before I got here. So we're hoping to replace that. We went out to bid. We got three quotes in. Healer Packard, Dalin Lenovo from different companies. We have Sentinel came in, Marigold and ITO Solutions. We're looking to choose Sentinel. They came in at one of the lower prices, but they had the technology that we wanted for the best price and the needs that we have. So the price came in, you have the price on there, two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and seventy-two. What Sentinel is going to do, it's a turnkey package. They're gonna give us all the licenses, the maintenance agreement, the implementation, the support. And we've used them before. They're part of what we did last year. Great company. The second thing we're looking to do is the firewall upgrade. It again is almost six years old sometime in March, April or May and June is when it was replaced six years ago. This one is E-rate eligible, so we put an RFP out. We got two bids in, again Sentinel bid on it and then a company called Colina Labs, never heard of them. They're out of New York. We so chose Sentinel. Again, we've used them before. However, the other company came in with incorrect information and they were three times higher. So in saying all that Sentinel one came in with great high availability and configuration needs that we had, and they're going to do another turnkey full up implementation. And then the third thing, we're looking to upgrade the phone system. The phone system has aged out quite a bit. Six years ago, they replaced two servers in data center and never replaced any of the phones. So the phones are somewhere ten, eleven years old and I cannot purchase those phones anymore. We have to buy an upgraded one to work with our system, which is anywhere from four to six hundred dollars each phone, or I buy off eBay, which I've been buying off eBay to just limp us along this last year here. But we went out again for proposals, we got a couple of quotes in. We have Ring Central coming in, a company called Eight by Eight and Mitel. We chose Ring Central. They came in at two ninety-nine, six twenty-eight oh five. It wasn't the lowest bid. It was the middle bid. However, it's a cloud-based product, very resilient. We have a lot of districts that in Michigan that are using it. There's a big consortium out of Kalamazoo. And we piggyback off of them and use a lot of their templates and so forth. We're going to go through Sourcewell, a cooperative contract. Low maintenance. They gave us a couple of good promotional credits, twenty-five thousand dollars, a bunch of free phones. So they really won our business and we're looking forward to working with them. So and saying all of that, this is something we'd like to get going as soon as possible to make sure we get under the tariffs and anything else that's going to happen. They're going to hold this until the end of the month because I told them I needed at least until the twenty eighth for approval. But the project's going to include the installation, removal of old legacy systems, the configuration, training, ongoing support in addition to the five-year warranties on all the hardware and software. So again, good quality bids came in with the recommendations that I needed. So I'm just looking for you guys to take a look at it, ask any questions that you have. Again, the data center firewall and phone systems, all three of them add up to seven hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and five cents. If we put a 10% contingency, that's eight hundred and around eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. So I'm hoping we can move forward with that. Thank you again, board, for listening to me and the community for supporting our technology needs. Any questions? I know I went super fast for you guys, but.
Thank you. Questions, trustees? Trustee Srestha.
Thank you. So I was just wondering about the long-term cost efficiency, like how much are we looking to save? Like I'm just trying to get a understanding. What does that, what does that figure look like? What does that figure look like?
Look, on each one or all together?
Number one, because that's what it specifically states in that.
So for the first one, so the data center upgrade on storage and servers. We need to utilize those servers for our everyday what happens here. So we have storage. We have Microsoft Active Directory when you log into our network, certain things. So long term savings is we don't have to pay maintenance on the old systems that are failing. We streamline the systems that we're getting. We're going from six to three. And then we're actually going to take one of those systems and put it over at the high school to be in our disaster recovery room as well. So that if something happens over here in the data center, that data center will pick up or the disaster recovery area will pick up and take over so that we guys still have access to get onto the network, access to login your computers, security is behind it and so forth. That kind of answering your question. So right now we're paying a year to year maintenance to keep those systems up and running because they're out of maintenance last June. They went out of maintenance.
I I just had a question. These are all funded by the twenty twenty two bond, right? And because there's about eighteen million dollars in that bond for technology. And is this eight, seven hundred and forty eight or eight hundred and twenty three thousand, more or less what you'd expect, expected to pay for these system upgrades?
Yeah. So when Tower Pinkster came in and we went through that eighteen point four for the technology budget. We broke it down by building and then we had one sheet that was broken down for district wide IT equipment. So for the three things on this, they came in at or Tower Pinkster allocated around seven hundred and thirty thousand. They anticipated it to to be. And we came in at seven hundred and forty eight thousand. Now I'm asking for ten percent contingency. It doesn't mean that's part of it. But seven forty eight is what I came in at, which is around eighteen thousand more, which I think is good. Knowing that that was at twenty twenty two prices and we're already at twenty twenty five, plus the in regular cost increases that happen over year to year. I think it was a pretty busy.
In the ballpark.
They are very much in the ballpark. Absolutely. I thought I was going to be way out of the ballpark, but we are very much in the ballpark. Yeah.
Glad to hear that. Trusty Brent.
What's the anticipated lifespan of these three things?
Yeah. So servers again, the data center stuff, the first one. We're looking anticipating a replacement in the next bond that goes up. So in five years. Reason being, just like any computer, these things run twenty four seven and they're at high end running. We have special programs in the background and I don't know if anyone is techie or not that actually manage what gets moved to what drive at all times during the day, how much resources from one system is being utilized to another system. So they're heavy usage. We've had a couple of the ones that are in there right now fail that we had to get replaced. So it is about a five to six year lifespan on those firewall, same thing. It constantly is working to protect our our students and staff from stuff that they shouldn't be doing or hackers trying to get into us, bad actors trying to get into us. So that's constantly monitoring and looking in every bit of anything that you do on our network that goes out to the internet passes through those firewalls. And then the phone system. So the phone system now, since it's going to be in the cloud. The only thing that we would be replacing on those are the physical phones. And right now the physical phones lasted us almost ten years when I started here. Every year we place, we replace about ten to fifteen percent of the phones. They fall off, they break. The network card gets broken inside because some someone must have pulled it out of the wall and it yanked out a piece. Handsets go bad. However, I'm looking at maybe seven to ten years on those. So that would be the only replacement that we need. Maintenance and update costs for a cloud service is on them for the first five years. After that, we can renew the contract or go up for renewal. That help?
Other questions for Director Asim? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We'll talk about this at our next meeting.
April twenty eighth, we'll need action on this because the quotes are good through the end of the month, correct?
Thank you, yes. Yep.
Okay, at this time in the meeting, citizens have an opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest. That may or may not be part of the evening's agenda. Citizens are required to limit comments to three minutes, except when this requirement is waived by the board president during the meeting. A dozen any timekeeper will communicate to individual who's addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment and input. However, the board meeting format is designed to facilitate the evening's agenda and therefore restricts board members from engaging in conversations with speakers or immediately responding to questions. Questions and concerns may be addressed by the board later in the agenda and may be assigned for follow up by the board or superintendent at a later date. Do we have any blue cards, Secretary Doxy? And do we have anyone online? Thank you. Hey, next up, we have our high school students Xavier and James. Look forward to hearing what's going on. Oakmoss, hi.
Hello, I'm Xavier Rogers. I'm a senior.
And I'm James Sharp. I'm a junior.
Okay, so our first topic is going to be events. So like events happening at the high school. It's going to get pretty busy because it's like we're coming to the end of the year, kind of. We're still pretty far, but like a lot of things happen at this time in spring. So first thing I want to mention, April tenth, we have the senior field trip. I was not there, but they went to the John John Ball Zoo. And from what I heard, it was fun, but it was also cold. Which is not a bad thing, but it just meant like a lot of animals were inside. But like, it still sounds like everybody had a really good time.
And also that same day, the juniors took the work heaves and that went really well. It's just a test that basically looks at it asked you questions about the workplace and other stuff related to workplace. So it kind of tests you on. I guess, I'm not exactly sure, but it's related like careers, I think, in certain jobs. And then also today, the juniors took the SAT and freshmen took the PSAT. So that was, that went well. And seniors and sophomores did not come to school until later in the day. So that was nice of them to get a little bit more rest than usual. The PSAT will be for sophomores on Wednesday and that same day juniors will also take the M step. So that's upcoming. And upcoming too, we also have an event on April twenty fourth called Touch of Class. It's an annual event where it allows underclassmen and anyone else to get like, not free, but food at lunch. It's like a special event where seniors dress up and if you buy a ticket, you go and it's like in the the rubber gym, I believe, and like the seniors will like line up and they'll take your arm and they'll guide you to a table. You can go get food and they usually serve the olive garden. And I think this year they've partnered with Grand Traverse Pie to have like pie slices too. So it's a fun little event that helps to students to feel, you know, or less student spirits.
So another event we have coming up, the Senior Academic and Athletic Awards Night on May eighth. So students that attend, they like to dress up. There's a small little performance beforehand as people walk in by the jazz band. And yeah, it's a small, little, nice event. A lot of seniors receive awards and are recognized for things they've done at the high school.
On May seventeenth upcoming, we have prom. It'll be located at the Eagle Eye Golf Club, I believe, and the theme for prom is Old Hollywood. And so I believe some of the things that'll be there is like, I think they, I heard talk about like red carpet and like the teachers posing as paparazzi. So that'll be fun. It's cool theme. So that's I like that.
Senior volunteer project day is coming up. I will be participating. That's on May twenty first and really it's a, it's a great thing because a lot of seniors are, I mean, they're everywhere. There's a ton of volunteer day projects, like I can't name all of them, but there's just a lot. I wish I had like a list of them pulled up right now, but it's just students helping around the community. Simple stuff like ripping up weeds and yeah, a lot of seniors participate.
In this past Friday on April eleventh, the blood drive took place and NHS had their blood drive and there were many volunteers, lots of people volunteered for it from NHS. And we also had many people who came and donated blood. There's no numbers yet, but I've heard that it was very successful. So that's a good. And then also on May sixth, there is NHS induction where freshmen or sophomores who got in will come and they'll receive a certificate and they'll be welcomed into NHS. And then juniors and seniors can also RSVP. And juniors will walk along the stage and grab a certificate for continued participation while seniors will receive a medal for their continued participation.
So moving on forward to music. So this is the reason I did not go to the senior field trip. But on also April tenth, band students and SUI, so Symphonic Wind Ensemble, like the audition band for band went to Western Michigan University to present a program at the annual spring conference they have there where they like, they recognize an upcoming conductor. This year it was Viet Kwong. He's made many amazing pieces, but it was a very great event. It showed all showed our band students what the music program was like at WMU. They held master classes and they welcomed us all there and it was a fantastic performance and we spent the whole day there. We were provided pizza and food and it was really just an incredible experience. Jazz for the jazz band, they had their final concerts. Participating with the Chippewa bands also, because there's also jazz programs there. And I just want to say they're doing excellent. The future of jazz is looking really good with the eighth grade band. They were, they were amazing. And they also had the event at MSU called Essentially Ellington, which is an event that happens yearly and many bands are invited. And I would just like to say the Oakmoss Jazz Band was honorably mentioned for how good their trombone section did. And we also had two honorable mentions for trombone soloists. So that was really nice. And now the music programs are going to be from preparing for their final spring concert where they recognize their seniors. Yeah, it's just really emotional for them. Yeah, it's important.
And then also I'm sure you've heard of Drowsy Chaperone, which is the upcoming jazz musical comedy. The shows will be on the twenty fifth, the twenty sixth and the twenty seventh, and that'll be a good one. So you should come see that.
For sports, girls varsity soccer tied one to one against Stony Creek on Saturday. And they will be playing tomorrow at East Lansing at seven PM. Boys varsity baseball defeated Beal Beal City nine to one and thirteen to four on Saturday, too. They will also play today at Travis City West at six PM.
And then also not mentioned here, but recently Oakmoss Boys Volleyball started up and they've been doing well. I think they've won a couple of games so far against Heartland and Brighton. All right, they won, yeah, Brighton. And they had, I believe, a tournament over the weekend where they won a few games too. So that's a highlight. And that's all. Thank you. So if you have any questions?
Yes, thank you so much. Any questions, trustees? Yes, Tracy Phelps.
Just real quick, Xavier, good to hear about the volunteer day. You guys, I think that's a really cool thing. I was just curious. I know in the previous years, they had some students went back to their elementary school to like volunteer there. I was just curious that's if you know of any of that happening again this year. I thought that was kind of a cool opportunity.
So I think, I think there's really like events at almost all of the Oakmoss schools. So like if you want to return to your elementary school, you can. I'm, I'm going to, I'm not going. I went to Central. I don't think I'm doing an event here. But yeah, I think they hold events at all of those. So yeah, you can choose to go back to your elementary school, but I mean, you can help out.
That's awesome. Yeah, I guess I didn't ride at every school. So that's, that's really cool. They're giving back to the school community. So I love that. So awesome. Great news. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much, gentlemen. You're welcome to stay or to leave when you'd like to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have Superintendent Reports and Requests Superintendent Hood.
Thank you, President Buffett. April marks Arab American Heritage Month honoring the rich culture heritage and contributions of Arab Americans in the United States. Michigan is home to one of the largest Arab American populations in the US and this month offers us a chance to recognize the diverse backgrounds, traditions, achievements of Arab Americans in fields such as science, politics, arts, business and more. Some notable Arab Americans with Michigan ties include Ralph Nader, son of Lebanese immigrants whose advocacy led to the creation of seatbelt laws and vehicle safety regulations, which have significantly impacted Michigan's auto industry and of course the auto industry across the United States. Dr. Mona Hannah Atisha, pediatrician of Iraqi descent, played a key role in the exposure of the Flint water crisis, demonstrating the impact of lead contamination on children's health. And a final example of Rola Anashaf, who immigrated to Lansing from Lebanon with her family in nineteen seventy eight, is a director, screenwriter, producer and multimedia artist. Best known for her award winning film Detroit Unleaded, which offers a unique portrayal of Arab American life in Detroit and Dearborn. So thank you, Dr. Schley, for helping bring attention to an important part of the Oakmoss community and culture. In addition, April marks National Autism Acceptance Month. You may have in the past said, wasn't it autism Awareness Month? This year, the shift focuses from awareness to acceptance, promoting inclusion and understanding of individuals with autism and those on the autism spectrum, emphasizing acceptance, neurodiversity and support. Communities and organizations highlight autistic contributions, debunk myths and advocate for accessibility and inclusion. Again, a very important part of our Oakmoss family. I wanted to thank Assistant Superintendent Bailey and members of the OEA and our administrative team for developing and committing to conducting a review of our teacher evaluation tools. The committee met since last summer, looked at a number of tools and has selected the Danielson Framework for Teaching twenty twenty two for the following reasons. It updated framework based on current research, emphasized teacher reflection and professional growth and aligned with our district vision and goals for educational equity. All of our administrators and teachers will be receiving training on that tool in August. And Danielson Framework is one we're familiar with because we've used older versions of that in the past. So thank you for that collaboration. Our food service director Brian Kremkow is working to pilot compostable materials in our cafeterias. That's being funded by our food service programs profits. Won't impact any payment to the general fund of the district that we receive from food service. I think they contribute about eighty thousand dollars on an annual basis back to our general fund. Our past boards have encouraged the district to pursue some green initiatives and green options as our styrofoam and plastic trays we use daily. Those have not been environmentally friendly. So that increased cost for us is one we want to spend on investing in a greener option. And we can currently afford it with new revenues as our our district is providing meals to all. Our revenues are up. So as you know, we've had a food service spend down plan and this is something we could, since it's been prioritized in the past, use as part of our spending down. So I want to thank Brian and his team for helping implement that and our principals for giving feedback on how to, how to do that successfully as well. Let's see, I'm looking into a potential location change for our beginner garden program. It's been housed at the Montessori for a number of years and in looking at wanting to open up some space to keep that enrichment program at Montessori and not have to transfer that for them to Edred like we have in the past, looking at moving that program. It's a district program. And it has been housed in a number of other locations, including Hiawatha and Bennett Woods in the past. So we're looking at where there might be space and impacts of moving those, you know, twenty or so kids and a staff member to another site. Students for Beginner Garden in the past have only been housed. It can only use district transportation if that happens to be the school that it's at. So for example, when it was at Bennett Woods. If a, if a Bennett Woods kid was in Beginner Garden, they could hop on the transportation we had because they're kindergarten aged and and, and use the transportation, but others, it's considered kind of an in district transfer who might apply and they'd have to get their own transportation. Currently at OPM, no one receives transportation to the program. So this might open up a little accessibility for those that might want to be, might want to be in the program. So interim HR Director Trisice is looking at impacts to our specialist schedules before we make a final decision. Parents who are enrolling or in roundups are notified. We're looking at a potential location change. And again, they all transport currently, so we'll keep you posted on, on the future of that. We have published our calendar for the next school year and our seventh grade staff just got word that they're opening to attend Spring Lake Seventh Grade Camp. Occurs the week of February fifth, when our calendar for next year has a scheduled no school day. So we have worked with the union and administrators to propose an alternate day to change that day off that was the week of February fifth to attach it to the long president's weekend. So their Monday, February sixteenth is already off because of president's weekend. We could move that day from the week prior to a couple of weeks later and put it on the end of president's weekend. and put it on the end of president's weekend to allow a longer weekend for our families and have that off on Tuesday, February seventeenth instead. Wanted to discuss that change at the board table, just because the board had, you know, weighed in on the calendar. And then take the steps necessary to make sure, number one, our students and staff can attend camp without missing a scheduled no school day. And then we make that change and communicate it to families well in advance of next February. So we can talk about that in a moment. A couple of safety updates for the community is we have Stop the Bleed kits, which Director Deal, Safety Director Deal worked with local law enforcement and first responders to provide in a tri-county grant. So our Stop the Bleed kits will be placed in our classroom response buckets. And staff will be trained in August on how do you use a Stop the Bleed kit if you would need to. So it's a, a first aid kit that helps with a bleeding incident that will be found across the district in classrooms. In addition, we have installed Knox boxes on the exteriors of our buildings. And those Knox boxes are just another way that first responders can gain access to our buildings in case of an emergency, a best, a best practice. Our health team and our district nurse Stephanie Gosha, along with Director Deal, have also worked to revise our admin regulations regarding our cardiac response plan and safety procedure. That plan is required to be approved by the board and helps maintain our district heart safe certification. So within the next month forecasting for you, we'll have them here to kind of go over the cardiac response plan at each of our, each of our buildings for your approval. Dr. Sli is working on a student success dashboard to implement. That is a data dashboard that would show our district data over time in regards to our students and demographic groups. So we have a draft we've looked at with Dr. Sli and she's working on updating that hopefully before the end of the school year to roll out. Excited about this opportunity to show transparency to our community and give our parents and, and community a tool to define both our successes and where we have continued work to do. So we expect to see that up on the website and we'll have Dr. Sli, I'm sure, sharing that with the board and community here soon as well. Met with our community ed childcare coordinator Christina Algeri. And she has communicated rate increases for summer programs and for next year's programs and is working on the update, next update we'll bring to the board. On our sustainability, those programs was established for a late June and early summer, so getting that back on the board's radar. Currently Christina told me she's very encouraged by our fill rates and the response from the community. But again, that's new, so we'll be monitoring that, keeping our kind of our, thumb on the pulse of that, her fingers on the pulse of that and evaluate that as time unfolds. We are working on scheduling a follow-up with the Edgewood Parents Group that has been forming as well to do some check-ins. We're going to do check-ins with the board, but we're also going to do periodic check-ins with those, those parent groups. So they don't feel like they need to come to the board to get those inputs, we'll get, we'll get input and feedback from them kind of on a, on a cadence throughout the year to connect with our Edgewood, Edgewood families. We've heard a little bit of feedback of parents not being happy with the increase in rates. But we have openly shared the struggles and rationale for our plan to sustain itself moving forward. So we'll be happy to come back to, to June, in June and provide you with an update on our fill rates and feedback to make sure that we're hitting the markers we need to hit to make that program profitable. But again, very encouraged by the fill rates and response from the community in terms of keeping those programs filled and keeping the programs break even or profitable. And then finally tonight, I'm going to ask interim Director Trisice to come up and present an update to the board and community on our hiring process for H R. So Peter's been working hard with our, the rest of our human resources team and myself to revamp our H R Director Hiring Process. He's going to share a little bit of an overview and timeline with the board and community.
Good evening. Just this background, we had fifty-four applications for the H R Director position. So it was very broad, wasn't very deep. A lot of people with H R experience, very few with H R and school experience. And I'm a firm believer that this type of position in human resources is different from being in private industry. So we tried to focus in on that, we did have several that did have a combination, or at least had the H R or the school experience. We did a screening interview for seven of them. We chose five to go forward and of those five, three of, or four of them are currently H R Directors in school districts, smaller districts. One of them withdrew, so we have four interviews that we're doing Monday. Three from outside and one internal. The interview panel will be very broad, representatives from all employee areas, teachers, administrators. There will be a writing sample that I'm putting together that they will, the applicants will do after their interview while we're debriefing the panel. We'll go through all those during the day and then seek input either written or oral from everybody that's been there. We'll actually have more people in the room than questioners because I want to make every, make sure that everybody has a chance to see the candidates and render an opinion. The ultimate decision is John's. It's one of his key cabinet members, he has to be comfortable with that individual in order to go forward. We're likely to send one or two finalists out for some testing at Hiring Solutions that does some personality inventory to see what they are underneath and the way they deal with people and situations. Do the reference and background checks, all of that stuff, hopefully we can have an offer to someone by the end of April or the first week in May. I've told anybody I've ever interviewed, if you have a job and you tell me you can start tomorrow, I'm not hiring. You need to treat their current employer fairly and I would expect nothing less if we hired someone and they found another opportunity. So my goal is to find out when they're available, get them on board. Ultimately, I think July first, because it's the end of a school year, a calendar is probably a target. And we can get it a little earlier than that, that won't hurt my feeling. John told me that he hired me to hire my replacements, so I'm trying to get that done. Any questions, concerns?
Questions, trustee Daxi.
Uh, yes, will you, will there be like a transition where you would help with the onboarding for the new?
I told John that I will be available if he or the candidate wishes it. Not on a full-time basis, but as a consultant and coming in, I have no problem with that, I'm only half a mile from here, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, questions for Superintendent Hood? Uh, trustee Daxi.
Uh, yes, Superintendent, could you remind us for the community ed where we landed with the rate increase? Was it twenty percent across the board or certain classes and, yes?
I would have to look those up so I don't misspeak, but I know it was weighted a little differently. So those that were in the programs with the lower ratios had to pay a little bit more.
Okay, yeah, if you could share that, thank you.
Sorry, I, sorry, interrupt, I think was it twenty-five for early childhood and nineteen everywhere else?
Might have been, I'll want to check and I'll make sure I get that memo to the board.
Trustee Wood.
You said that the fill rates were looking good and I, when I heard that and read that, I thought that meant in those early childhood programs. But I was also wondering about the summer programs because I did see some feedback in the community about the increase of summer programs, so, but I also have seen increases across some programs everywhere. So I guess I was just curious if the fill rates for the summer program are also good as well.
Uh, let me ask Coordinator Algeri, I know with summer programs, one of the approaches we use is looking at the demand and then staffing for the sections. So, you know, if there's more demand, we can staff for more sections and if there's less demand, we can pull back on staffing for fewer sections. Then let me check on, on where we are with that and I can probably give you a comparison to last year's staffing to let you know if we're up or down in comparison to the number of sections for, from prior years.
Trustee Captain.
Thank you. Our high school students mentioned testing and that's something I wanted to just, the testing season, I think my daughter has P S A T today or tomorrow and then M step and then N W E A and these kids are, you know, kind of drowning in it. And is there any way to, I mean, they're all required, you know, N W E A is ours. Spacing, timing, are we losing a lot of, you know, instructional hours? Where they could, not instructional hours, but you know, where they could be doing something else.
So I would say that's a challenge that's not unique to the Okamis Public Schools and at this time of year especially. Because we have the N W A testing, which has a window and we have some flexibility on which to give it in, but again, that window is normed nationally, so you can't just pick any time to take it. And then we do have all their, and remember that N W A test is a required test that we have to give three times a year. We can choose the tool for the growth model, but we have to do that three times a year. And then the P S A T, the A C T work keys and S A T, as well as the M step. Those are all state required tests with state windows for when we give that. So it is a lot, it's overwhelming for students, our staff knows that and works with kids to try to pace it as best we can. But I don't disagree with you that it's heavy in the spring and we would rather be teaching new lessons than doing all these assessments, the assessments, of course, play a role. I could, you know, I know Assistant Superintendent Bailey is very thoughtful in the planning that goes into when those are offered with the windows and works with administration and staff to try to find the best solution to that traffic jam of, of needs with testing. But it's admittedly a lot for, for a kid.
Um, and then can I just ask, put two on, you're talking about February next year, having to change one of those days. So we're talking, talking about for President's Day, Friday, Monday, Tuesday off?
I believe so, yes.
Nice.
So it'll be like a long winter weekend for.
Let's do that every year.
So in terms of that, I want to hear from other trustees as well, taking that February fit, February, week of February fifth date and making sure we don't have the camp, you know, campus such a hallmark experience that I want to make sure that we're not stepping on a day off in the middle of, of, of that week and that experience for kids. And there's plenty of time to move it to Tuesday, the seventeenth right now, just swapping them out. Our teachers' unions seem to be agreeable, I looped back with them, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't overstepping my bounds with the trustees.
Trustee Phelps.
I have no issue with it. My only question would be is I know we had issues kind of with our schedule approval with the I S D and kind of putting days off next to common calendar chunks and this kind of would do that, so I didn't know if we needed any extra approval to, to make that happen.
Yep, great question. This would not be next to a common calendar day off, that would only be the winter break and the spring break would be the common calendar days. So we wouldn't have to seek additional approval for this change.
Perfect.
Trustee Daxi.
So I just want to clarify the dates that you're looking for, for the camp. So there is a scheduled day off, the week of the fifth, which is when the seventh grade camp will occur. Move the day off to the seventeenth, so do we, are we looking at the thirteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth off? Or is it just the sixteenth? I know I'm buzzing, I don't know why.
I'm buzzing too. I'm glad I can hear it because it means my hearing isn't all that bad. So sometimes my kids are like, do you hear that dad? I'm like, no. Yeah, so I believe that would be the thirteenth and sixteenth, we already had off for the president's weekend and this would add Tuesday, the seventeenth.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions about it or is anyone not comfortable with that move? Okay, we call that snipping away time and.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, trustee Kavanaugh.
Sorry, one more. I had a Beginner Garden question. Do we currently have one or two classrooms?
One, we've never had to, well, I wouldn't say never, gosh, not for a long time if we ever did. One classroom of about twenty kids for Beginner Garden. And that is preference to our Okamis families who cannot apply first before we'd offer those seats up to anyone else outside the district, so it's one section currently.
Okay, and I know that in some years there was quite a long waiting list and then some years there aren't. Is there any talk of expanding and then can you remind me, is it tuition?
No, these are kindergarten age students, so they could go to kindergarten, so they're kindergarten eligible. And this year we actually have openings, so there wouldn't be a need. We have, I think, five seats open right now, we have about fifteen and no one on the waiting list.
Okay.
Yep.
Other question, trustee Wood.
Yeah, I have a question about the Beginner Garden move as well. So is that, we're wanting extra space for the afternoon care for P P K, correct? And is that because we're adding another classroom or is that because the room that was used before is no longer able to be used?
So this provides us flexibility if we want to bump into an additional classroom of enrichment. Right now, we could use the room downstairs and we could use current teacher space in the afternoon, which is never ideal, especially with the Montessori manipulatives, to put another class in that room in the afternoon just isn't ideal. So this is a way to try to find a win-win and respect that teacher space and have two or three possible options for an additional section.
Other questions for Superintendent Hood?
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to board reports and requests. I'll begin by acknowledging receipt of correspondence. We received correspondence regarding childcare programming from Michael Callahan and Amanda and Matt Dushavcek. And a communication regarding district communications from Katie Atkins. Before I open it up, I just want to share a couple of things. One, I want to thank the community for participating in focus groups and completing surveys, over fourteen hundred community members completed the first survey, which the Michigan Association of School Board sent out. I don't know how many responded to the most recent survey of their summary, but that closed, I think, today at four o'clock. So I'm looking forward to seeing what came in after that. The invitations for the planning retreat on April twenty-sixth have gone out and are, I guess, competing responded to. Also want to let folks know that the three hundred and sixty evaluation of Superintendent Hood started last week and is continuing this week. And the report will be given in closed session on May twelfth. Another item is that to, we have our, our board retreat scheduled for August first. And I want to form and kind of an ad hoc planning committee. It would be the task of this committee to help plan their retreat, seeking input from all trustees and Superintendent Hood in that process. But I'd love to have a couple of other members join me in that board planning process, other retreat planning process. So trustee Tresta, are you interested?
Great, is there anyone else who'd like to participate? Pregnant pause.
I am, of course, happy to help with whatever is needed.
Okay, if someone else changes their mind, just let, let me know and we'll go from there and trust, trust, I'll follow up with you sometime soon on that. The last thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, we have a new, well, since what, last October, a new structure for planning our board meetings with the executive team and one of the things that is, you know, we're kind of feeling our way forward around is when other trustees want to kind of add an agenda item. Our planning document is linked in the yellow sheets every week, so you can kind of see what's on our mind. That's pretty much what we follow. But like our next meeting, I think, is this Thursday, the seventeenth. And I think we need to do a good job of communicating. And I think we need to do a good job of communicating when those dates are. We try to actually plan a couple of meetings in advance. So we are still feeling our way forward on it. I would ask in the short term that if you have a agenda item to add that you please email anyone on the executive team and just includes Superintendent Hood and myself at this point. It will be kind of continued if we develop a better process, but that's what we'll do for now.
If I may, trustee Buffett, President Buffett, I'll include in our yellow sheets at the top underneath there, the date of the next meeting.
Perfect.
So then any trustees that might have something to submit will know to get it to us prior to that meeting.
That's great.
And just a reminder, our trustees, please don't send it to all three and yourself because that would be a quorum of the boards, we have to avoid doing that. So send it to one other member and myself, please.
And myself.
And and yes, and the president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing I'd just say is that I'm happy to say that all trustees are contributing to our Okemos Education Foundation Gulf whole sponsorship. So thank you all trustees and thank you to O E F for holding this fundraiser for us. So there's more board updates than I've ever given before. So other board reports, requests. Trusty Kavanaugh.
Thank you. So in the board reports, there is a draft of a letter that the advocacy committee has worked on for to send to the Department of Education about funding. We focus just on funding on this. So I'd like to get that out soon, since we've already been talking about this for weeks now. So I'm hoping not for a complete rewrite. But if anybody has comments, concerns, it'd be great to let us know.
Just for clarification, so this would go to like the way it's drafted Senator Slotkin and Peters?
That's my thought and Representative Barrett.
Okay.
And then, you know, we could send it to the Department of Ed, but I think it just gets shredded when it goes there. So let's see.
There's almost no one there.
Exactly.
Right now, a friend of mine is interning there.
So but at least, you know, at least our, our representatives or our representative and our senators.
Trusty Doxy.
Yes, I would request that we be specific and clarify that this is to the U S Department of Education. Thank you. And one, thank you to the advocacy committee for drafting this. And then I mean, I'm okay with it, but I don't, I don't know the value added for referencing Okemos being an affluent community in the purpose of this memo. So just some feedback there. Thank you.
My thought was, since we get told that all the time, or you know, like, I think that people consider us an affluent district and but to actually point out that twenty percent is a pretty significant number of of our students who would qualify for free and reduced lunch. But we can, we can certainly take that out. I just thought that, especially with Representative Barrett, who is closer to our district than maybe the two senators who wouldn't necessarily be as familiar since they're statewide. But we can certainly take that out.
Trusty Phelps.
Yeah, just I guess a little feedback. First off, thank you for doing this. I think we all here are, you know, want to be champions of public education and make sure we're we're properly funding that. The two feedbacks I would give, one, I appreciate you clarifying who this is going to. Based on that, I think it's important that we are very clear on what action we're asking of them to take. I feel like that's it's little champion public education can mean something different to everyone, I guess. You know what I mean? So maybe I would clarify what we're, what action are we requesting here? Because that will then they at least know what to do or at least what we're asking them to do. And then two, I know I said this previously, I really love us for able to find more ways to show how this affects Okemos students on a really, you know, ground floor level. It does a really good job at a fifty thousand foot level. I think, I think there's, it'd be great if we could show this is our concern based on how this would affect our students here in Okemos. And I don't, I don't want to word smith exactly how that happens, but I just, I really think that's going to be more effective and getting the action that we desire, showing how this affects their constituents specifically in Okemos that we represent. So that would be the the two kind of, you know, big picture thoughts I have.
Other thoughts, feedback?
Some things on like to to build off of what trustee Phelps had mentioned about what we're asking for. Like, I think the things that we could clarify is that we're asking them to just send out the money that's already been appropriated. And you know, just keep the the money that's already be, that has been appropriated historically for things like Title One and Special Ed. It's still not enough to educate populations that serve or that experience those kinds of disadvantages. I can provide some sites on that. People have tried to estimate how much more it costs to estimate or sorry, to educate different populations. And also can provide a citation for. So money matters. And what's interesting, what I think is interesting in our case is that Michigan historically provided some of the strongest evidence that money matters in education in terms of a whole range of student outcomes. And I mean, maybe this is trying to play too much with language, but I hope that we don't become the case of what happens when money's taken away.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other thoughts, questions, ideas? Trusty Kavanaugh, do you have a sense of?
Sure. And then just people want to see this back or just to go? I mean, waiting two more weeks might be long, too long, maybe it doesn't, doesn't matter. I don't know what action is actually going to be happening in two weeks with our, you know, in Congress, so.
Trusty Doxy.
I would like to see a final product based on the feedback. Thank you.
We can have that as a discussion item at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other reports, requests from trustees? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into action items. Within action items, there's a consent agenda to expedite the business of the board, which groups a number of items together to be dealt with by one action of the board. However, items in the consent agenda may be extracted by individual board member requests for further discussion or clarification. Can I have a motion, please?
I moved the board approved items one through six for an immediate implementation and appropriate action. Item one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty five. Item two, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty five. Item three, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March seventeen, twenty twenty five. Item four, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting of March seventeen, twenty twenty five. Item five, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April one, twenty twenty five. And item six, approval that the board acknowledged receipt of the March financial statement and approved payment of bills for March.
Support.
Move by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Win. Trusty Doxy.
Yes, I will like to note just two minor edits in the minutes for March tenth. It's just clarifying who moved and supported actions. So the first is trustee Andrew Phelps moved and it was supported by trustee Katie Kavanaugh to adjourn to the executive session. And then the other edit is trustee Katie Kavanaugh moved. That was just the edit. It it has that it was supported by myself for waiving the reading for the ESTA Michigan Earn Sick Time Act. So just that correction. Thank you.
The motion would include those edits to the March tenth minutes.
And thank you trustee Doxy for those. I know we were expecting to fill in a few of those blanks, so thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as amended, say aye. Aye, all opposed. The ayes have it seven oh. And then we also have some other action items. One involves the physics student trip. Can I have a motion, please?
Sorry. I move that the board endorse the O H S physics student trip to Cedar Point scheduled for May fifth, twenty twenty five, with the understanding that students will abide by all school policies and procedures.
Support.
Okay.
There was a tie.
All right, I will move by trustee trustee Kavanaugh and supportive by trustee Doxy. Next I go to trustee Phelps. And I would just like to add that Ms. Turner really in her presentation kind of highlighted the efforts that were made to include all students. So I just want to kind of lift that up in appreciation for paying attention to that piece of it. Okay. All in favor of moving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The ayes have it seven oh. Next up, we have a Business Professionals of America, B P A, a member of field trip.
I move that the board endorse the O H S B P A member trip to Orlando, Florida, scheduled for May seventh through May eleventh, twenty twenty five, with the understanding the students will abide by all school policies and procedures.
Can I have a second? With support. Moved by trustee Win, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. Just, trustee Trista.
Oh, I just had one question about, you know, in a bit like where this was fifteen hundred was going to be that's with upfront payment or installment payment, but will the families get itemized? Report up what cost how much and if there's any remaining, will they be? Sorry, I know my question is.
Yeah, I would have to ask. This is Merchi about that, but I'd be happy to get that information back to the board.
Yeah, I think we talked when Ms. Merchi presented about like using district credit cards, right? And that's something that I think might, the policy committee might kind of look at as well as the questions that trustee Trista is raising.
Yeah, we definitely have some procedures that we can help support her on because we don't, for many purposes, not just for the staff member. And, you know, safety and security of funds, but district policy and financial safeguards. We have the district credit cards that we can authorize for that use.
Perfect. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, all opposed. Katie, ayes have it seven oh. Next up, we have the third party custodial contracts brought for Director Lieber at our last meeting. Have a motion, please.
I motion that the board authorize the superintendent to extend the existing contract with Grand Rapids Building Services, G R V S, for two additional years in accordance with section one A of the custodial services agreement at an annual cost of one million, two hundred and forty seven thousand and ninety four dollars. Roll call, roll call, I don't say that.
Thank you, trustee Win. Can I get a second, please? Sport, okay, move by trustee Win, supported by trustee Phelps. As noted by trustee Win, this is a roll call vote. Trusty Doxy.
Tom Buffett.
Yes.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh, Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Lenny Shuffler. Jillian Win.
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Seven oh. Okay.
We do need to vote to approve the mower purchase.
Okay.
It's online, let's see, let me pull that out for us here.
Thank you. Next up, we had a presentation last time, but also by Director Lieber on the purchase of some, a new mower. And we need a motion.
Yep. Let's see.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can probably make that work.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need a motion to approve the purchase of a mower and the cost not to exceed sixty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety four dollars.
Let me find it here, as you said, the sixteen, right? All right, I move that the board approved the purchase of a new mower not to exceed the amount of sixty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety four dollars.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Trista. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, carries seven oh. And next up, we have some additional discussion items, right?
We have one.
Oh, sorry, one more motion, excuse me. We have about the section one twenty seven education assistant plan. Can I have a motion, please?
Sure, I move that the board waived the reading and established the educational assistance plan to provide eligible employees with educational assistance benefits under section one twenty seven of the Internal Revenue Code.
Support.
Moved by trustee Burns, supported by trustee Doxy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The ayes have it seven oh. Now we have some additional discussion items, starting with the textbook recommendations. Superintendent Hood or?
Superintendent Bailey is here and will lead to present our new textbook recommendations for the following school year. It is not assumed that these funds are available in the general fund to purchase the textbooks. And she's going to review those recommendations and the plan to seek approval from the board and make sure our community is educated on these books. So let me share my screen here. They see, I'm bringing it up here. Okay, I think it's oh, nice to kind of come up or yeah. There we go, right, aren't you?
Okay, go ahead. You can go to the next one. So I'm excited to bring up the annual recommendations for textbooks or instructional materials. We have a little bit lighter of a, of a round this year. So I just wanted to kind of remind the board and the community that this is really aligned with our current strategic plan of making sure that we have current instructional materials for our teachers and our students every day in their classroom. And at the end, it just talks about each one of these decisions is really an opportunity for us as a district to move closer to our goal of educational equity for our students. So I kind of wanted to back up a little bit and I have a handout. What I wanted to do before we get into the ones I'm going to present for you tonight is I wanted to give you the calendars that we have for our curriculum cycles. So we have a calendar that you can see for K eight and then one for nine through twelve. So these are really important documents for us in the district. They're reviewed every fall with department chairs at the high school. K eight, we look at what are our current needs, what licenses are expiring, what materials might be getting outdated. And then we continue to have an ongoing plan moving forward. What we found about oh six, eight years ago, we didn't continue the cycles and we got really backed up. And then things got really costly. So we're in a really good place that I can tell you that we're being really intentional for at the high school. If we have a large purchase, such as if we're going to get U S history, that's going to apply to many, many students versus if we have an elective area where we just have a smaller amount that are going to be taking that course. So I just wanted you to know that this is kind of the the map that we use every single year throughout the district to make sure that we are consistently reviewing materials K through twelve. We're consistently making sure that we have updated instructional materials for our students and our staff. So just wanted to kind of share that with you. So when we went through the process of this this year, we found that we had less purchases that were needed than we had thought, which was a good thing. Which is why Director Lent will be talking about the one time savings that we have. So we always have a line item budget for K eight, then one for nine through twelve. Executive Director Lent and I meet regularly to make sure that that's the appropriate allocation based on what I know is going to be happening for the next year. So we wanted to make sure we moved this one month earlier. So board members who've been here, you might remember this used to come in May, but then sometimes it came too late after we were talking about the budget. So the presentation tonight is really just the content. It's to share the content with you, have a discussion. And then when you decide to vote on it in two weeks, you're only voting for the content. Yes, we can use this, it's approved. Then that gives you time to factor in any of the budgetary things as you're going through the budget process in May and June. So that was intentional a change this year. Okay. So I'm going to bring for, for you tonight, journalism, creative writing, contemporary literature, all out of the E L A department at the high school. Then we have A P statistics also at the high school math department. And then French one and Spanish one, which are both taught at Chippewa and the high school. A few years ago, Director Sli and I um, worked with our team to update our uh, textbook um, review process and our form to make sure that we were being um, having culturally appropriate materials that we um, were incorporating a lot of the best evidence-based rubrics for looking at instructional materials. So we incorporated that and a few years ago, we brought it to the board for approval. So that's what all of these have been based on um, to begin with. Then they have to get approval at their um, level by department chairs or committee. Then they go to the district advisory council. So that advisory council is made up of twelve educators from um, elementary Kenawatch, Chippewa, and the high school. And three administrators from each level. When they get on that board, um, their task is to uh, be the review process for any course recommendations and any textbook or instructional material recommendations. When they're on that board, they, there's not a term limit, so they can stay on for several years. Which is helpful because they really start getting an understanding and a really depth of knowledge of these materials and the process and um, the rubrics. So they have access to all the rubrics, like, you know, it's many, many questions that are answered and rating scales. So they review all of that and then we have a meeting to make sure that the, these are all approved, answer any questions beforehand. In previous years, I think I mentioned a couple of questions that had come up from that process that we went back, gather more information before I come to you. So that's kind of all that's happened so far before I present to you. And then there'll be a two-week period of review. The materials will be available here in our office for any community members. So that's more of the process. Okay. Into the fun. Okay, so the first one that I have before you is uh, the journalism class at the high school. So right now, we, we don't really necessarily have consistent uh, materials that we're using. The district already has approved the New York Times. So that's been approved for a different course in the past. So um, that's one that they will be using, but it's already got pre-approval. So what the recommendation is, is the Michigan Daily. And so they were really looking for some um, quality publications that had high quality of journalism, a neutral um, base. And that rep was representative of diverse perspectives. So they looked at a couple other newspapers and either due to cost or the inconsistency in the journalism, they ended with that as their recommendation. For creative writing, this is the twelve represents it's a senior level elective. So they have a core text that they've been using. Um, so what they want is improv for writers. So this would be a supplemental core, uh, supplemental text. And that would be used um, as an additional mechanism to really engage students in writing. So that book has um, different ways and strategies to think about how can you um, be creative in your writing? It talks a little bit about like script writing and things like that. So really looking at another angle for that creative writing course. So both of those are elective courses. Actually, all of these are elective courses. Um, so contemporary literature, this is the biggest one. So contemporary literature by definition of the course is contemporary. And so what they want is to make sure that they're adhering to the course description. So I wanted to read that and I included it here because we, it's an elective ELA course for seniors and I wanted to make sure that we were aware of what it meant before we looked at the text. So the purpose of this course is really to use a variety of books to stimulate exploration, discussion and reflection of themes in relation to social justice and current issues. And so you can see that I included their current reality. Those are the bucks, the books that have been um, previously approved and are used. They don't use all of the books every semester. These are the ones that are approved for use in the class. So when you look at, I'm bringing forth twenty-two texts. They're not going to use twenty-two texts in a year. But this is so that they would have the opportunity to give options to students. The text would be used in a variety of ways, including literature circles, which are small groups in the classroom or whole group discussion. Um, so I wanted to share with you. Well, pass the whole thing, but when I talked about the text um, review tool, I want you to be aware. This is the thick packet that was provided for this. So each one of these texts went through the whole framework that we have for textbook reviews to identify um, the quality of the text, um, the relation to the standards, uh, the basis of the text. Um, and so all of these texts that are selected, it's the cumulative whole of them. So when we look at just one of these texts against our framework, it could skew to say this is only representative of one population or one group. But if you look through the culmination of all twenty-two of the texts, they're meant to be provided in the whole. So the teachers would, for that semester, make sure that they're offering a wide variety and range that maybe have similar themes for the students to um, look into. Uh, some of the rationale is including other texts that the students would have read in earlier sections of their high school experience. This is also uh, an elective course. So students can choose to take this in twelfth grade. There's other offerings as well. As a reminder, the Michigan merit curriculum does require for um, credits for ELA for graduation. So this could be, um, this is a half semester um, for their senior year. So I included all of these texts and then we have the lexile levels for them too. And the one thing I wanted to state with the lexiles is you can see that we have a range there. It's um, arranged from, I think we have one in the five hundreds all the way up to um, twelve hundred. When we think of lexiles, that lexile level is based on um, the frequency of words and the sentence structure. And so that can help determine the difficulty of the text. However, the other thing to consider is the overall theme of the text and what that does to increase the difficulty. So for example, I brought an example for you. Um, the book of mice and men has a lexile level of six thirty. But based on the themes that it has, it's much more complex. Therefore, it's more challenging as the reader. So think of six thirty verse Diary of a Wimpy Kid, which is nine hundred and fifty. So I think we can really, when we think of those two, which are pretty common texts, the lexile is one indicator, but it's not the whole story of the complexity of that um, of that uh, text. So I wanted to share that information with you too. I also, in your board book, um, it was a request and so you'll see in board book, there's a accompanying document that is also available that has a link for a synopsis of each of these books too. So again, tonight is discussion, then there's preview for um, the community over the next two weeks. So I wanted to make sure that you had full access to all the information. Okay, in sharp contrast, this is AP Statistics. This is the textbook that has been used in the past. The reason it's before you tonight is we need to renew our licenses. We've had great success with this publisher in the past. This is just the updated edition so that we still have access to that. Um, it's written by uh, the authors of AP exams and it's worked really well for our students. Oh. And for anybody who wants to read the. It's nice and happy. Yes. We get the online licenses, so that's helpful. And then um, the last department um, that I'm bringing forth is for world language. And it's a recommendation for French one and Spanish one. So French one, the last approval um, was in twenty eighteen, which I don't know about you, but when I saw that date, I thought, well, that just seems like yesterday. Nope, that was, that was seven years ago. So um, really, both of these are side by side because they have um, the same publisher for them, but once for Spanish, once for French. But the themes for both of these are how do we authentically learn languages? And so it's um, they've been doing pilots with both of these and these texts are specifically designed with our current research for second language acquisition. They're engaging. They not only talk about the language, but they talk about the culture and the music and um, the art and the dance and they have humor in it. And so um, both of the teachers and the department chair for this really felt like this was a better way to introduce our students to these languages and more than just language, the culture that goes along with the language development. So all of these, um, all of these materials are really reviewed by our professionals, our teachers who are in this content every single day. Through that process, it goes through their department chair, our district committee, and it's before you today. We really believe that these will position us well to continue moving our programming forward in a positive direction and provide students with the best experiences for their education. And they were, again, they're available for preview over the next two weeks. Um, I have uh, paper copies, synopses of all the novels. So if any parents want to come in and then you also have that link to the synopsis online too. So trying to make the materials available in multiple ways.
You assistant superintendent Bailey, uh, questions? Trustee Sresta?
Well, thank you so much. First of all, I'm really excited that our students do not have to wait to go to community college or college to read all these different books. Um, so my question is mainly about the ELA contemporary. So uh, depending on whatever selection are made for the year, for the semester. If there are sensitive topics, how are the teachers preparing or giving the trigger warnings or how are uh, the to the students and the families?
Yeah, so all of the whatever is um, going to be used in that is going to be included in the um, course curriculum. So we would make sure that they are notified of what those texts are ahead of time. I'll say the educators for our English courses, whether it's this course or anything else. They're really committed to making sure that the texts are authentic to our students, which means it's usually dealing with some real life issues that could be of sensitive nature. So um, I know of, having been in some um, meetings with them, they're always very uh, articulate in the words that they use and they want to give that space so that students are able to process and that things aren't um, sprung on them out of nowhere. So I think, you know, notification ahead of time, letting them know what's going to be happening. Um, there's a lot of discussion in this class. That's the purpose of that. And so again, this is an optional class. So if students feel like this might not be the best fit for them, we've got lots of other great offerings as well. But I really trust our teachers. They're gonna, they're gonna take care of our kids.
Okay, thank you. And then second question, sorry, I thought I was um, so regarding the transparency and the finance for journalism, how, who will be in charge of, because I see that students will be responsible writing and selling the advertisements. So for transparency purposes, how will that be handled?
Oh, well, I'm just bringing forth the newspaper, so I bet Superintendent Hood can follow up with that for more of the logistical happenings.
Yeah, so, so uh, Dr. Kemsley works with staff at the building level to handle the um, finances of that class. Um, that's not typically something that would come to the board table during an approval process, but um, they use that as a teaching tool as well for budgeting, uh, selling subscriptions. And then um, they have uh, uh, separate accounts um, that that money is is coordinated through. So um, if you want more information than that, I can get um, Dr. Kemsley in touch.
Thank you.
Yep. My, my daughter's a editor this year, so I'm happy to provide some information offline. They also do bake sales and whatnot, but that's all kind of handled in the class. Secretary Doxy?
Um, no questions. I don't know what that buzzing is. No questions. Just thank you for the thorough presentation and just being intentional in terms of timing and so how it impacts the budget. And I really appreciate the um, additional documentation with the links to the synopsis of the uh, contemporary literature. So thank you.
Thank you.
Trusty Kavanaugh.
Um, I just wanted to say that uh, my son's class just started of mice and men and they do a very good example of the letter that was sent to the families of what to expect and, you know, possible things to bring to our attention. And the contemporary lit list is very exciting to me and confirmed of why I was an English major and not a stats major anyway. So these are quite great books. I'm excited.
I will share that during our district advisory council, when we were reviewing all of this, other teachers in the district were like, can we sign up for this class? This sounds lovely. So um, it was well received by a lot of our educators throughout the district.
Trusty Phelps.
Yeah, ten seconds. I just wanted to say I really like this approach, much better than just passing every book down the aisle. We got five seconds to look at it and we're slowly, you know what I mean? This is so much better. I love the links. I love to be able, I mean, go, love it. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for that. Assistant Superintendent Bailey put a lot of intentionally into the feedback that we received and talked about at the executive level. So um, this is kind of a revised approach. And um, just appreciate her thoughtfulness and being open to that feedback, hearing it and giving a great presentation.
Yeah, and and just real quick, I'm gonna say this allows the community to look at the synopsis as well, which they're not able to do if they just watch us pass books across the table. So, which I appreciate. Thank you.
Trusty Burns.
Yeah, so another question, the contemporary literature offering. So as you know, like, there's a pretty broad range of text complexity and theme and stuff like that. So how, do you have a sense of like how the teachers are going to be making selections about which books to use at which time?
Yeah, so it's really looking at who's, who's in that classroom. So when they look at their enrollment for that class period and they look at the student interest, that combination of where do we have the levels, where are interests and kind of how to group that. So I would imagine that there would be no two classes that might be typically the same, based on kind of what's coming forth. Um, I also did want to share with you that they have twenty-two for um, for review and approval. And they have it um, sectioned off. So if during the budgeting process, you wanted to do it in any other way, they have a three-tier system for priority that they could purchase over three years. So they've really been intentional about how they might mix and mingle some of these um, if needed uh, to support um, the overall direction.
Trusty win.
Um, just for clarity, so with contemporary lit, it says you replace all the current novels, right? So none of the current ones that have been approved before will continue if these are approved.
Correct.
Um, I just wanted to echo what trustee Doxy and trustee Phelps said in terms of appreciating the thoughtfulness of the approach. I particularly appreciate you putting the kind of lexiles into a context. And, and I appreciate them being included in our packet. And I, I was honestly a little surprised by the absence of higher lexiles. I mean, the point well taken. Got it. Um, makes sense to me in terms of the complexity of themes. But just kind of as a wondering in terms of our overall offerings, maybe this is more something that might go toward the instructional program updates, um, just to kind of, so we can understand in terms of offerings, what is out there in terms of rigorous texts from a lexile perspective as well. So, and just one plug, I did ask my daughter about the AP stats online. Does, does she use it? And the answer is yes, it's been really valuable. So I'm just, I, I don't know, I understand what she's talking about when she does.
And I just wanted to thank you all for the feedback. It's always appreciated um, and really want to give kudos to our teachers. This is a long process. So for those twenty-two texts that I brought forward, there were at least a dozen that they also reviewed and did not bring forward. So they spent the whole year with this process and they were so thoughtful in curating what was going to be the best for our students. So it's a lot of time for all of these and I just wanted to um, to verbally say that our, our teachers are amazing at this process every year. So it's really them bringing the highest quality materials forward um, for this process. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have um, a discussion I had to move forward on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget development, superintendent hood?
Yes, uh, so executive director Lance is. We are back up. I don't know if we want to wait for trustee when or up. She's coming back right now.
Perfect timing. Let's, let's go.
So for those of you who may have lost connectivity, we were just discussing um, reduction of sections based on interest. Uh, but there has not been an elimination of, of a entire program. So if you're at home, you might have missed that. Um, that's where that reduction came from at the high school and it is by attrition. So those, that reduction of three FTE is um, from retirements.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good. Don't worry.
One point six million dollar use of fund balance at this point in time, which would leave a fund balance as a percent of expenditures of eleven point five percent. If we didn't do anything from here out. Um, I do want to provide some context in how the uh, what it means when, when we're these, these expenses or these costs, the use of fund balance when they repeats itself. If it's not structural, um, if it's a one-time item, it's just a one-time reduction in the fund balance. It's a one-time use. If it's structural and it continues, then it compounds on an annual basis. So we're looking right now. So we're looking right now at preliminary fund balance where we would start the year and of about one, almost 1.4 million dollars. It includes some budget revision that I haven't fully built into the 24, 25 budget yet. But then we look at what are some one-time sources or uses of our funds, about 447,000, so that's the carry forward effect. So the, the, it's, we had to back out the one-time items in what was, what repeated. So now we're at 1.8 million dollars that carries forward. Our new budget variables are 198,000, so that leaves our net budget impact of 1.6 million dollars. Now, for 26, 27, we carry that forward. We start the year in the whole of 1.6 million dollars. And we have to look at what were some of the one-time items or sources and uses of funds that we had in 25, 26 that won't repeat again in 26, 27. For instance, the, the textbooks that we just talked about is one of those items, 150,000 in textbooks. You know, and there's, I would have to go back through it and, you know, if you wanted to know what made up to tell you each one of those items. But really, it's 855,000 dollars of one-time savings of dollars in 25, 26 that won't repeat themselves. So now we're at a 2.4, almost 2.5 million dollar 26, 27 before any new budget variables. We do know our ISD funding is being cut over two years. That's the 26, 27 estimate at this point in time is a, is a reduction of 700,000 dollars, so we know that. So now we have our 3.1 million dollars use of fund balance. So that would then take, because we would start the year at 7.9 million, less the 3.1, that's 4.7 million dollars or 6.8% of fund balance. So this is really showing you how, what I'm trying to illustrate is how, when you have a structural deficit, it, it just compounds itself as you go further out years. So it is something we have to, we can't just keep spending general fund, or fund balance dollars because those are really for one-time use. We still have items that we, we don't know, we, and we're, you know, for instance, state aid. We will update as we continue to get information from the state legislature, but as of yet, we only have the executive budget. There is a house budget that people may have seen and it's really bare bones. And really, it's, it's not a, it's not a true budget, educational budget for next school year. It's my understanding is it's a stopgap in case everything falls apart and it's for, at the end of September. Because remember, the state has till October 1 to adopt a budget. So if everything falls apart here, they have some document, but if, if you have looked at it, there's really nothing in it but some foundation and a couple other grants. So it's, it's not something that we really want to build into our assumptions. We still have to look at staffing, we have negotiations. Look at other sources of revenue for the general fund or all items that we're still looking at. In terms of timeline, I'll be, in terms of 24, 25, be looking at a second budget revision in May. I'll present that in May if, for adoption at the beginning of June. In terms of 25, 26, so we are continuing discussions internally with our leadership team. And we'll be doing that through May through June. So there, there, you know, ongoing conversations with our leadership team regarding the budget and the impact in the multi-year review. Each board meeting, we're updating our budget assumptions and providing the board and the community with information on, you know, those updated assumptions. But what we, what we're wanting to do tonight is look at and talk about work sessions with the board. So we can review in greater detail if we have to make, you know, look at revenue or expenditure changes and what that might be and review those with the board in a, in a longer period, you know, outside of a regular board meeting, so there can be more interaction. Potentially have some of the leadership team who may be able to explain items if you have specific questions. We'd have various members here in the team here to help with that. So looking, I don't know if you want to do that or talk about it later.
So I want to thanks Executive Director Lance. So our, the budget work sessions, we wanted to get on the books now with our trustees. And we do have a meeting, a regular board meeting scheduled for May 19th. And we wanted to use that as a kind of abbreviated regular meeting and a budget work session. And then the following week, that Monday is Memorial Day. But we would like to have, look at calendars and look at sometime the week of May 26th to set aside a to be determined date if needed. We're thinking the board's going to probably want to look at those potential budget reductions on a couple occasions. So to have another, another session and, and towards the end of May would be helpful. A couple of reasons for this timing is number one, our budget revenue consensus usually happens mid-May. Correct, Executive Director Lance? So we'll know, we'll have more, more data for the board on where that most likely state budget will be. And then that VSP, the voluntary severance program we have with the teachers, becomes due about then as well. So we'll know impacts of that assumption being locked in at that time. So that budget picture is really going to come into a lot more focus mid to late May. So we want to make sure we set aside some time to have those conversations.
Can say add to that too, in terms of the timing of it, that's also after our strategic planning retreat.
Yes.
And, you know, our, our hope and expectation is that some, is something that's usually on your, your list, at least historically on the impending budget factors that are yet included are board priorities, so they're not here. But that's going to be really community priorities that kind of come out that will help shed some light on what some of the things to, to fund and whatnot. I will say that it's, it's hard, like this is the first time that I've been on the board. Well, A, that we've done a strategic planning process and B, that we've been in the kind of precarious structural problem that we have. It's, it's not great timing, right? We just got these great ideas from our community about things we want to do and continue to do. So I just want to, I don't know, it's going to put that into some context, right? So we'll have these, you know, big dreaming conversations as we should, because the strategic plan is about much more than this particular budget cycle. And it's kind of a hard time to, to be having that conversation, knowing that we're going to have to cut, not add things. So just to put that out there as kind of creating some healthy expectations for our planning process as well as the budget.
I really appreciate you putting that out there, trustee Buffett, because it is kind of a perfect storm of visioning and hopes for the future with also a, a dose of reality for us. And I do want to take a moment and make sure the community is aware. And again, we're going to send our communication to the community sometime this week in regards to, you know, a kind of a budget update for how did we get here to, you know, 1.6 million dollar deficit? And, you know, truly, things have happened that couldn't be anticipated by the district. For example, state retirement crop, where costs took about 1.2 million dollars decrease in our revenues. So that 1.6 million, we have a state retirement cost being increased that decreased our general fund revenues by about 1.2 million dollars. In addition, we calculated an increase to health insurance for all our employees. The health insurance rates went way up more than we anticipated. So that increased about 825,000 dollars in costs for us over what we anticipated of being an increase. And then also the INM ISD, we calculated the formula by which they allocate special ed funding. And that allocation is hitting us with a reduction of just under 500,000 dollars for 25, 26. And then additional 700,000 dollars in 26, 27. Again, we gave some feedback into that process, but it's up to the ISD to decide how those allocations are made. So you can see adding those up, we quickly get to the 1.6 million dollar deficit. And this board has been outstanding in the past in terms of prioritizing services for our students in terms of ads post-COVID to navigate the, you know, the learning impacts and challenges and behavioral and emotional impacts of our current student body. But we have some hard decisions to make to look at how we move forward with meeting those needs, knowing some of the things that are, that are thrust upon us. I will say the fund balance has served its purpose in terms of environmental remediation. So the reason a fund balance exists is for, if you have something unexpected come up, like we did the Kinoa environmental remediation of almost a million dollars. We had a fund balance that could take that type of unforeseen circumstance on. What we really need to be careful and that's what it's intended for, that one-time unexpected issue. We had a savings account to handle it. What it's not meant to do is, is handle structural recurring, recurring expenditures. So with that being said, we're very sensitive to the impact that this could have. But also know it's early yet and there's a lot more pieces to come into this puzzle. So we're going to be intentional about the pacing and cadence to make sure we do this right. And we're very thoughtful and intentional about what we prioritize and, and some hard decisions on what we might have to let go.
Thank you. Other trustees with questions? Yes, trustee Wen.
I was just going to say that I appreciate like all of that just said, because I think that the discussion of how we got here is really important to the community. To the point where I almost think like before, every time we have a budget discussion, we need to have a quick little summary of how we got here every time. Because I think that's just such an important piece for us to understand as board members and also to share with the community. So we can understand why we're here and also see like, can we try not to get here again?
Yes.
So I think that those are really, a really important piece.
And we'll be sending a letter out again this week to the community to make sure they're aware and it'll explain the how we got here. And we're going to have to keep on retelling that story as, you know, this isn't a, a fun conversation for everyone to have, but the health of the district contributes to the health of our employees and health of our, health of our students and our student outcomes. So we will navigate that together. And looking at that week of the 26th of May, is there a evening that works better for trustees than another? Again, that Monday is a holiday, so we'd be looking at Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday prior to that week for a, a set aside to be determined budget meeting. Yes. Is, or is Wednesday graduation, let's see.
I had Thursday on my calendar.
Thursday, the 29th is graduation, that is on mine too. So let's avoid that. Tuesday, the 27th? To avoid or to have? To have.
I have no strong preference.
Or Tuesday and Wednesday, is there any consensus on either of those? Yes.
I would say Tuesday because my daughter is graduating at Wednesday.
Yes, yeah.
Is there a, a time of day, just put it out there? That would make it possible for either of you?
Tuesday, we wrapped up by 8:30.
We could potentially start earlier too, if we wanted to.
So like, 5 o'clock start, 5 o'clock on Tuesday, the 27th?
5:30.
If, if everyone can do it, then I would say absolutely.
5:30 and the 27th? We're checking calendars now, so.
Into the 27th. You also have on here the week of May 19th, I'm maybe traveling for work that week. And I like the first of the week, so I think I would be unavailable the 19th or 21st. But I am available the 27th.
Yeah, don't we have a regular media discussion on the 29th?
I didn't have that calendar, but I'm just letting you know.
Yep, it's fine.
Right, okay, so for a second, budget workshop meeting, 5:30 on the 27th.
I don't have my full calendar with me. I don't think it's a problem right now, but I'll let you know.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Great.
Okay. Let's see, at this time in the meet, citizens have an opportunity to address the board regarding any items of interest. Individual comments at this time will be limited to three minutes, but may be extended at the discretion of the board present. A designated timekeeper will communicate to the individual who's addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment, however, our meeting format does not allow the board to engage in conversation with speakers. Questions or concerns may be assigned for follow-up by the board or administration at a later date. Secretary Doxy, do you have any blue cards?
We do not.
Nate, do you have anyone online?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. With other matters, just a reminder that the retreat, it says board retreat, but it's actually the planning retreat on April 26th. Superintendent Hood and I have talked about sending out some, some communication prior to that, so people have a sense of the day and maybe a couple of materials to get people oriented, so look, look for that. Any other matters for the good of the whole?
I just wanted to circle back really quick to May 19th because, um, I know that right now we just, the three of us said we didn't have it on our calendar, the May 19th date. And looking at my calendar, I see May 12th is actually the regular board meeting.
You have two back-to-back.
Two back-to-back. Okay, okay, I might have just missed it. Okay, thank you. And so what time does May 19th start? Do we know? Seven, okay, thank you.
Other matters? Okay, we are adjourned at 9:33 PM, thank you.